Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Orange Planning Board for March 3rd, 2014. Can I get a roll call, Jettie?
Yes, Mr. Lorna.
Here.
Mr. Rosna.
Here.
Mr. Hutt.
Yeah.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Torpe.
Here.
Reverend Wilson.
Present.
Mr. Chambers.
Here.
And Mr. Ehrman.
Here.
Thank you, and this is to state that pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231, PL 1975, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2014 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record and the Star Ledger in December 2013, and by filing said notice in the office of the Village Clerk. First, I'd like to welcome tonight two new members to the Board, Neil Chambers and Michael Ehrman, thank you for joining us, we look forward to it. And I'd also like to briefly thank, in their absentia, because they are no longer on the Board, Deviana Guha and Eli Goldstein, we've served together for many, many years, and they consistently provided terrific energy and analysis, and I think we will all miss them, and we are very grateful for their contributions to the Village and for their volunteerism over the years. We're going to change the order of the agenda just a little bit, because I think we need a quorum for the resolution, because I'm not sure who is here for that meeting, Jettie. So, what I'd like to do now is to move to the approval of the resolution, which is Case S-15, Joseph Rispo and Larry Fish, this is Block 201, Lot 87, 549 Longwood, Longview Road, the applicant is seeking a major soil disturbance permit. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Question.
Yeah.
Since I sat in the audience for it, but was not up here.
Right.
I cannot vote, correct? Or can I vote?
No, why did you sit in the audience? I don't know. Were you recused?
He was in a state of...
Of limbo.
Limbo. But you watched the videotape, you have to sign something.
I did, well, I was here.
Yeah.
I'm not appreciating...
There was a sort of, some confusion about who was a member at the time.
So you sat and observed the entire hearing, and you signed that you read the tape?
Well, I will sign if somebody certainly averred to it.
There you go.
Probably can't, I just think it'd be a lot, how many people do we have?
How many people do we have who can vote? We have to, you have to make sure you're near your microphone. How many people can we vote? Who was here, Jettie?
Who's eligible?
Adam, Mark, Tom, Reverend Wilson, that's it.
I think I just prefer to have somebody else move it, because I'm not...
Well, I didn't, no, I moved it.
Oh, you moved it, then you're fine.
And Adam seconded. So, we're good, so he can vote, he signs his thing.
He can vote if the Secretary will give him a receipt to sign, okay.
Okay. So can I have a roll call on that, Jettie?
Okay, Mr. Lorna.
Yes.
Mr. Rosna.
Yes.
Mr. Hutt.
Yes.
And Reverend Wilson.
Yes.
And Mr. Miller.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Michael Miller.
Good. Okay, thank you. Well, we'll do this quickly, we can move the approval of minutes of the special meeting held on February 11th, 2014. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you for those minutes, Jettie. Before we do the election of officers, which will be the last thing that I do for the Board, I think we should do the appointment of the professionals. This is, I guess, a yearly occurrence, which we nominate and, I guess, agree to have serve the professionals that have been serving with us, or who we would want otherwise. We have a planner, the secretary, the attorney, and the consulting engineer. I guess the consulting engineer is an as-needed basis, is that correct, Sal? So, I guess this is just for the Board to, names come to their mind, or something like that, and then they just vote on, is that right? Is that how we do that? This is on my agenda, I didn't have a chance to talk.
Tom is having trouble hearing you.
Sorry. Sal, do you want to just back me up, that we just get names and then we...
I think these professionals probably already have proposals into them, don't you do RFQs?
I think they're just renewed.
It's just renewing the...
Yeah, renewing the current profession.
So is there anything we have to do formally, or do we just announce it?
You take a vote.
You take a vote.
So we'll make a motion on renewing each individual's appointment, and then take a vote.
That's what I thought, I was getting to that. Okay, so, let's start with the planner, do I hear anyone to nominate our planner who's been serving for us?
Yeah, I will move that the firm of hire and gruel be retained for the fiscal, for our calendar year of 2014.
All right, second?
Second.
Do I need a, do I need a vote by name, or can we just do a...
You could probably do it all.
Can, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, good to have you again, Susan, for the year. For our secretary currently, I think everybody knows, do I hear someone, a name for that?
I've moved that Ojettie be retained as the secretary for this year.
Here, a second?
Second.
Second, good, do I, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you, Jettie, we'll look forward to that. The attorney, who's not here, has been Patrick Dwyer, service ably.
I will move Patrick Dwyer, same retention.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, good. Then a consulting engineer, I guess this is, as I said, an on-call, someone who's, if we need for larger applications.
Yes, for larger applications for the Board to refer to the consulting engineer who's recently been omelet engineering, and, you know, in my opinion, they've done a very good job.
Good. So, do I hear a motion for the...
So moved.
Motion for omelet engineering, a second, all in favor?
Second.
All in favor of omelet engineering for, on an on-call basis for this year?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Good.
Good job.
It says swearing in of planner, would we do that now, since she's available? Engineer is not, but...
I think that's for the oath for testimony for this evening.
For everybody, or just a...
No, the planner's oath is for testimony, the swearing in would be of the...
Okay, well, we can do that subsequent to the next action. So, as everybody in the Board knows, and I don't know how much anybody out here, this is my last meeting as Chairman, I provided my resignation, I've greatly enjoyed the service to the Village, and it was just time to move on. So, tonight, we need to elect new officers, we need to elect a Chairman and a Vice Chairman. Currently, the current Vice Chairman is Harold Colton Maxx, who has expressed to me his willingness and enthusiasm for, if nominated and elected, he would be glad to serve as a Chairman. So, from our Board, I need to hear names, and we need to choose a new Chairman.
I nominate Harold Colton Maxx.
Second.
Do, any other opinions, or, good, no? So, all in favor of Harold Colton Maxx as the new Chairman?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. So, that, congratulations, Harold, when you come back in April, you'll be sitting where I sit, wherever you are.
This will teach him not to miss an even. Or to take three steps back.
He's well aware of that. So, he's a fantastic co-chair, and I think he'll serve you guys greatly. But we need a co-chair as well, a Vice Chairman, any names that propose, I know it's a little more difficult for Michael and Neil, who haven't served here.
I nominate Martin Miller.
Oh, nice choice.
I second.
Second, Michael, you up for that?
Sure.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
That's a great idea, any opposed? No. So, Michael, the meeting, Harold not being here, the meeting will be yours to run, the rest of the meeting, I guess what's left is the application for completeness, and then the Valley Street, 19 Valley Street. So, with that said, you're going to take over, I can stay put, but I think I'll probably choose, I'll stay put until there's an appropriate time, but thank you, all right.
I think, don't you want to swear us in?
Yeah, we have to swear everybody in.
Can you do that?
Sure. Members, you have before you a copy of the oath of office, obviously when, insert your own name, I'll read it, you can repeat after me and insert your own name. I, your name.
Michael Miller.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Solemnly swear. Affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people.
And I do further solemnly swear or affirm...
I do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform...
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform...
All the duties as a Class IV member of this, I'm sorry, all the duties of, and repeat your respective positions, member of the South Orange Planning Board.
All the duties as a Class IV member of the South Orange Planning Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment.
And I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment.
Nor to seek personal gain, favor, or advantage not available to the public.
Nor to seek personal gain, favor, or advantage not available to the public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Everybody sign it, and I can notarize it if you pass them my way, please.
Can I pass them over to you?
Now, are you sitting? Okay, so you're not yet resigned, we're not taking your resignation yet?
No.
Okay.
No, no, you can, I'd like you to finish tonight's meeting.
I think that's not possible.
Can you do that?
Well, you're not, you haven't, if you're not going to resign, you can, no, it's the new Chair, but it's up to you.
Okay.
You can, you can pass it on, it's up to you.
Did you want me to do it?
I delegate the authority.
I will run this last meeting, because... So, the next bit of business is the application to be heard for completeness, this is Case Number 235, Seton Hall University, Block 901, Lot 3, 400 South Orange Avenue. This is a minor and final site plan, the applicant is proposing an accessory building that is a single-story prefabricated concrete structure that will support the university IT department operations. It will house the IT racks and IT equipment, and it will be located behind the boiler plant and near the existing campus utility tunnel. Susan, would you mind expressing us what, how you found that application?
Hold on one second, we didn't swear in the professionals, so I need...
Ah, let's do that.
Do you swear that testimony you'll give here will be the truth, nothing but the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you God?
I do.
I do.
And state your names, please, for the record.
Salvatore Renda.
Susan Gruel.
Thank you.
You're Salvatore Renda. Okay, Susan, can you give us your opinion on the application, please?
Yes. We prepared a completeness memo dated February 28th, I believe the applicant has a copy of that, and within that, we have looked at the checklist to determine whether it had, whether we recommend it be deemed complete based upon their submission. We recommend it be deemed conditionally complete, subject to the granting of the submission waivers, and also having the additional information submitted 10 days before the hearing, but that would have to be done anyway, because what it is, is it is a list, certified list of property owners, we had a question about what was on the, whether that was the certified list, and also the public hearing notification, which would have to be done 10 days before anyway. So our question only was whether the list of property owners on the application is the certified list or not.
Good evening, Nicole Dory of Connel Foley, on behalf of the applicant at Seton Hall. The list that was on the site plans, I understand, is the most current list that we have, from the latest application, we've requested another certified list, as we typically do, right before the hearing date to prepare a notice.
Okay.
That's, that's fine, that answers the question, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Board, so, do I hear a motion for completeness on this application?
So moved.
So, you move that it be deemed complete?
Be deemed complete.
Okay.
Again, subject to the conditions spelled out.
In the higher gruel.
In the higher gruel memo dated February 28, 14.
Jettie, can you give us a roll call on that?
Mr. Lorna.
Yes.
Mr. Rosna.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Torpe.
Yes.
Reverend Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
And Mr. Ehrman.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, it would have been a lot easier if Seton Hall had submitted everything at once, and we could have disposed of all of their requests in a favorable light a lot sooner than we have.
Okay, so noted, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Before we hear the one application to be heard tonight, I just, with Jettie's assistance, like to make sure the rest of the agenda. Case 234/1014, Academy Street Corporation, that will be carried to April's meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
We're not here tonight. Do we have all our paperwork and drawings for that? I think we must.
For 234, not yet.
Oh, not yet?
That's why they're asking to be here.
That's why, okay.
Yeah.
And then Case Number 231, which is Luther Turner and Hazel Turner, this is carried pending HBC, but I heard that didn't get a very positive reception, so we may or may not hear that case.
Right.
That's been pending for a while.
Yeah, so, I have a feeling that will not be here for us next month, but certainly Case 234 will be. All right, after we hear this application, we'll go into the discussions. I think the letter from the zoning board of adjustment was for our information, as part of their obligations and statutory duties to let both the trustees and the Board know what they're up to, so to keep us in the know on certain developments from a zoning point of view. And we'll talk about the two ordinances from the township after we hear the application. So, if this applicant is here, we're ready to hear it. This is Application Number 233, this is Thomas McLaughlin, Block 1908, Lot 12, 19 Valley Street. This is a minor site plan application, the applicant is seeking a variance from Section 92-198, existing non-conforming condition as to side setback, that being the South.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, good evening, it's good to be here, Rob Simon from Harold Law, on behalf of the applicant. This regards property commonly known as 19 Valley Street, Block 1908, Lot 12, located in the B1 zone. The application seeks minor site plan approval, various waivers and variances as set forth in Ms. Gruel's report. Of course, the applicant, based on the course of the hearing, would also request any additional waivers or other relief that are required as part of this application. We have, as I stated, reviewed and received Ms. Gruel's most recent letter of February 27th, and we intend to address the issues raised during the court of testimony this evening. We have two witnesses, we have Jeffrey Stony Johnson, a representative of the applicant, who will briefly walk us through the intended operations and the purpose behind this application, and we also have Mike Lonza Fama behind me from Casey and Keller, the engineer and professional planner on the project, who will walk us through the site plan aspects of the site, and also will present testimony as a professional planner with regard to the variances and waivers that are required. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I ask that Mr. Johnson be sworn in at this time, shoot.
Hi, everybody.
Over here, I want to raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're about to be, about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you God?
I do.
Thank you. And state your name and company affiliation.
My name is Jeffrey Stonewall Johnson, I live at 8 Foster Court in South Orange. I've been a resident in South Orange for 23 years, I've also been a business owner in South Orange for 50 years.
Thank you.
And what is your relationship with the applicant, Mr. Johnson?
I'll be the managing partner.
And so if you would just describe for us the...
Gentlemen, we have to, since even though, we have to realize that there's a TV audience out there, so be aware that you should either carry your mics with you or stay close to it, so they can...
Okay.
So, it takes a little getting used to, but...
The microphone also comes out of there.
That microphone will come out, I think, of the stand, if you'd like, if you feel comfortable.
How's that?
That's excellent.
All right, good.
But you're going to find, you're going to turn to the images and stuff, so if you grab it out, maybe...
Nervous.
Should.
All right, there we go.
There you go.
So, as most of you probably know, prior to us purchasing the property, over the past 15 years, it's been three different establishments, most will probably remember the Stuff Shirt. So, the Stuff Shirt was a very family-oriented, family-friendly restaurant, kind of a beer and a burger place, and then the past two owners tried to make more of an upscale steakhouse. What we're planning on doing is bringing back more of a family-style restaurant, very family-friendly, someplace that's very, very comfortable, a very reasonable menu with high-quality food. As you can see, we're planning on doing a lot of changes to the facade of the building.
Maybe, let me just interrupt for a second, let me just mark these, because they're purposes of reference. I'm going to, I'm going to mark A1 as the, as the front of the building facing valley.
Okay.
And then A2 will be the rear of the building facing the parking lot.
Okay.
So, Mr. Johnson, purposes of the record, when you refer to the artist's renderings, just identify them as A1 or A2, A1 being the one facing valley, and A2 being the one facing the public parking lot, okay?
So, again, we're planning on bringing back more of a family-style restaurant, very reasonably priced. The inside decor is going to be kind of a late 1800s industrial look. My great-grandfather, James Rickleton, was a very good friend with Thomas Edison, and kind of an intricate part of inventing a light bulb, and we're going to carry that idea into the motif and the ambiance of the restaurant.
So, in terms of the hours of operation?
The pub, it's going to be an Irish pub, if you can identify on A2, just show the Board members where the pub area is. So, this will be the pub area, which we're going to call the snog. The snog will not be open for lunch, it'll be open from 4:00 till approximately 12:30 during the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and open later, probably till around 1:00, 1:30, the latter part of the week. The restaurant upstairs will be open for lunch, will be open from 11:00, and again, till about 12:30 during the early part of the week, and approximately 1:30 Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
And in terms of the number of patrons that you anticipate at Rickleton's, if you wanted to break it down in terms of who's going to be in the main restaurant?
So, the main restaurant has a full capacity, in the dining room, of 80 seats, the bar has a total of 33 stools, and we have a private banquet room that's going to be facing valley in Exhibit A1, it'll be in here, and we can hold 42 people in there. As far as the pub, we've actually cut the space down in the pub quite a bit, we'll have 28 seats for dining and 14 seats at the bar, a total of 42 seats.
And, Mr. Johnson, when you say you've cut down the pub quite a bit, are you referring to the area that was devoted for the food in the bar via the previous owner?
Correct. We've actually made the bar itself smaller, and we've taken out three seats, I'm sorry, three tables, two of those tables are now going to be an area for two dark quarters.
And your understanding as well is that even for the main restaurant bar area, that the seating capacity is less than what previously existed with the prior owner, correct?
Correct, we've cut that down approximately 17 seats total.
And what is, for lack of a better term, your game plan in terms of marketing and who you're trying to cater to with regards to the site?
Again, we're going to get back to more of a family target, young executives, we're hoping to draw people from down the train line, Short Hills, Milburn, Summit, also, as everybody knows, there's a lot more foot traffic in town now, so we're hoping on drawing a lot of that, and, as well as car traffic as well.
And as part of the application, you intend to have the restaurant and the pub utilize the public parking that is in the surrounding area, correct?
Correct.
And with regard to, and we'll get into it a little bit with Mr. Lonza Fama, but in terms of the, your understanding of the relief that's required by this Board as part of the site plan approval involves the alleyway to the right as depicted on A2?
That's correct.
And it has to do with the awning over where the sign is, if you want to just point to that?
Right.
Correct. And to, I guess, if you're looking at A2, to the right is the rear of the Toro Loco Restaurant, correct?
Yes, correct.
And you told me that you've had an opportunity to speak to the proprietor of the restaurant about your plans, and you've already engaged in a significant amount of internal construction.
Yeah, Teresa and I are actually very good friends, she's extremely excited about getting more foot traffic back into town, so she's, she's well on board on what we're doing, and she's very excited about it.
At this point, I have no further questions for Mr. Johnson, if anyone has any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Board.
I do have a question. Not that easy. I do have a question. Obviously, you need a sizable parking barriers, and my question is, I know there are private lots not too far nearby, close by, not too far away, have you tried to make any arrangements? I think that's on the mind of other Board members.
Well, actually, I have reached out to the owner, the manager, rather, of the property directly across the fact that the manager of the property that the new, that the Mayor's Office is in, the county hall, other than that, no, I can't tell you the previous three owners just were totally dependent on public, public parks.
And in terms of the, and you're a business owner, in fact, you have, was it called Stony's?
Right.
The burger place right on...
Sloan Street.
On Sloan Street. As a experience, and how long have you had, actually, that establishment?
We've been there for four years.
And with, based on your experience as a business proprietor in the area, and knowing what the hours of operation are, not just for your place, Stony's, but also other establishments in the surrounding area, can you just give an opinion on the Board in terms of your hours of operation at Rickleton's compared to the other areas?
Sure, yeah, I've actually opened five other restaurants other than these, I was a critical part of opening Coda's in Maplewood, I've also opened four other Venegas restaurants, and from my experience, our peak hours will be 6:30 to 8:30, that'll probably serve as maybe 75% of our business.
And based on your experience, Mr. Johnson, in the area, do you anticipate, because you're there a lot, because of your existing restaurant, do you anticipate that there'll be sufficient parking in the public parking lots in the surrounding area?
I do, I think that we're going to, it's going to be critical, obviously, we don't want people coming in looking for a parking spot and going to Maplewood or Milburn, I think we're going to, we're going to reach out and try to educate our customers about where other parking is. I know a lot of people that do come from other towns don't know there's a parking lot on Third Street, they don't know that they can park over near Sopek, I think we're going to get a lot of, hopefully, we'll get a lot of theater business and movie business, where people will actually park over here, come over to Rickleton's for a beer or a burger or something like that, and then come to the show, so I'm hoping, and I think there's adequate parking, it's just a matter of getting the awareness out there where the parking is. It's just a matter of getting the awareness out there where the parking is, I think.
Do you have a question, Boyd? I, I have a, counsel, just before we leave this witness, can you just, for the board and for the TV, can you just summarize the variance that you're asking for?
Well, sure.
And by pointing, you have a good rendering here, so just before we-
Right, well, actually, Mr. Chairman, if I can, Mr. Lanze Fama, who's a professional planner, he's gonna go through all the, the different variances and waivers that are required as part of the application.
All right. The other question I had for the witness was, I know that locally we have ACID and we have other, it used to be called Main Street, but there are other iterations now of, of design review. Have you gone to the Village, any of these people, with what you're doing on either the facades?
Uh, no, actually, they, uh, what's his name, Matt, I think?
Matt Glass.
Yeah, he, we've had discussions, he's been over to the restaurant. He's very aware of what's going on, he's very excited about it. Other than that?
I just would recommend, I would ask you to contact them and to see if they're, I, not that they would change anything per se, but it's kind of a, a process that I think everybody benefits from.
Sure, absolutely.
If you can meet with that, that group, they have designers as part of their group, and, uh, I think it would be helpful for everyone.
Chairman, can I ask two questions?
Sure.
About the, going back on the parking, how many employees do you plan on having, estimating?
Probably, including part-time employees, we'll probably hire about fifty employees. At peak time, we'll probably have, on Saturday night, a total of twenty, twenty employees work. And they'll be, they'll be instructed not to park directly behind our building, they'll be, you know, down on Third Street. But that'll be a very high priority of mine. Obviously, like I said before, we don't want people driving around looking for parking and opting to go someplace else.
With, can I ask a follow-up question with regards to that question, which is a good one? In terms of your peak of twenty employees, what do you anticipate in terms of what you typically will see in terms of the number of employees on a day-to-day basis?
Uh, well, at night, on a, Tuesday night, on a, in the main restaurant, maybe a total of about twelve.
Thank you.
So?
Mr. Johnson, could you speak regarding the signs? I know that the signage that was submitted in the application has, has changed somewhat, and there is a projecting sign on the Valley Street side, which, when we, we met previously, we talked about the size requirements. Is that going to require a variance from the board because you are limited to nine square feet for a projecting sign?
Uh, no, it all falls within the regulations. In fact, we, there was another blade sign up here that we took out because I think the regulation, it had to be directly between the first and second floor. So, rather than make all kinds of huge adjustments, we feel that between the sign facing Valley Street and the sign facing Down Valley Street, the blade sign, the blade sign, this should be, we feel it's adequate sign, it should be.
So, the, the blade sign you're proposing will meet the requirements, the maximum of nine square feet?
Yeah, it's actually a bit smaller than that, and it's just, just shorter than four feet out from the building. That falls inside that requirement.
So, just to clarify, when we, when we reviewed the application, we had noted that there was a waiver for the location of the projecting sign, the signage. So, you have eliminated that waiver because you've eliminated that one projecting sign, and now you have the other sign, correct, closer to?
That's correct. This was existing.
Okay.
We took this sign out.
Okay, so that, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
In direct response, Ms. Groot, to your comment.
Okay, we'll need, we'll need new drawings reflecting that.
Chairman, please.
Michael?
Yeah.
Go to a microphone, find your nearest microphone.
Hi, Mr. Johnson? Hi. I see on the front elevation that you have railing. Is there going to be, is that, is there, are there gonna be people on the, on that level?
On the roof.
Or on the roof level, we'll call it?
Oh, no, that's strictly cosmetic.
Okay. As well, I guess, as a follow-up to that, the overhang, the outcropping that is the subject of the variance, will that be supporting or weight-bearing, or will it be anybody?
This here?
Yeah, will there ever, any, be anybody on there?
No, it's strictly a canopy, just people that are waiting for their car to pull up, just covering from the elements.
Thank you.
Sure.
Boyd, anything else?
Well, yeah.
Sure.
I'm a little late to the game. This is my first night, so I might be out of order to ask, but I was wanting to find out, are you pursuing any sustainable components to this? Are you, did you consider a lead certification, any stormwater management approaches to, that were kind of?
I, I think the, I think it's a fair question, certainly, and I think the engineer will, will address that.
Okay.
Michael?
Just one comment. You mentioned Third Street parking lot. You are aware that that will probably be out of commission from spring through whenever.
It's sort of a red herring.
Yeah. So, you're gonna have to send your employees and?
I'll, I'll have a walk if I have to.
Two quick comments. One is just on the parking, I think, you know, one of the things that we're probably going to see more and more of, as we hopefully see more investment in, you know, creating businesses like some of the downtown, is that we just simply don't have enough parking in this town, public parking, and that we shouldn't require, you know, our parking regulations are probably a little too strict in that, as far as parking goes, that we're probably gonna wanna try and consolidate more of the parking that we expect to go to commercial establishments like this in public lots or public garages. And just, so just kind of from the Village's standpoint, as far as looking at these sort of things, I think that's sort of a responsibility on us to make sure that we're working with the planning board in finding more places for parking, and that's certainly part of a lot of the thinking that we're doing as far as redevelopment goes in the downtown, and we're gonna get a little bit with Third and Valley when it's done, and some of the other projects that we're sort of contemplating will do the same. But, so I, so I think that, you know, the variances, I mean, those don't really concern me at all because I think the responsibility, at least as far as parking goes, and I know we'll discuss it more, I just wanna make sure to, you know, remind everybody that I think that the Village understands, and I think the trustees and myself all understand that there is some responsibility on us to make sure that we're providing more public parking for people to use and to share among different businesses. And the second comment is just something that I, I'm sure everybody is thinking, but sometimes gets a little lost when they get into these, that I wanted to make sure to say before we get any further, which is, thank you for doing this. This is a space that a lot of people have a long time wanted to see something there, and, and this, you know, already a business owner in town, I'd just like to say that I appreciate you choosing South Orange to invest more money into and hopefully capitalize on more foot traffic happening and bring in some more of your own, and supporting all of the businesses. And so I just think that's a great thing to do, and it's great to see someone who's a resident, and then a business owner, and then another business owner, and hopefully there's more and more of that, of people investing back into town, and so, thank you for that.
Thank you, appreciate that. And we're very excited, by the way, and not only investing in South Orange, but the people that represent South Orange, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Boyd, anything else?
Just one other question. Given a favorable outcome here, what's your timeframe for opening?
That's up to you guys. No, we, we, we're hoping that if everything falls right, very beginning of May.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's good.
Do you guys have any?
You can't say tomorrow.
Do you have any plans? I know there's, in the front towards Valley, there's an extended sidewalk with, I think there may be a bus stop there, but is there any plans to have any outdoor dining?
Um, not at this time. We do on the alley, and down the road, we might investigate whether or not it's feasible to put outdoor dining, outdoor dining here on the alley, but right now, it's not-
Excuse me, sir, they can't hear you.
Just use your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's not in our immediate future. Down the road, we might put some alfresco dining in the alley, but right now, that's not in the plans.
Okay. And actually, that reminds me of one question, just, Chairman, let me know if this is the right time or not, but it just has to do with the buses and facing on Valley, and just if you guys have had any conversations with New Jersey Transit, or if that's a question or concern at all. I don't know if this is the best time to ask that.
No.
Because there's a bus stop, not right in front, but?
Is actually right here.
Okay.
Actually, we put this, this clock in here for the people wait for the bus, but other than that, no, we haven't had any contact at all.
But that's not, that's not something that you, that there's any concerns or?
No, not, not at all. In fact, you know, as you can see, the, the entrance is actually, we're moving the entrance from the far side of the alley, very close to Valley Street. Now it'll be much further back towards the parking lot here. So, most, I'd say probably, we get very little foot traffic in front here. I would say ninety percent of our, our patrons will be entering from the back of the building.
Will that door be open on Valley?
Uh, this will be strictly for fire exit, and if we do have private parties in here, we'll open it up for that.
And just because we have the benefit of these very gorgeous renderings, what, what, can you just describe what is those vertical, that vertical material on the rear elevation that the?
These here?
Yeah.
Um, those are about two feet wide, and they come out about a foot from the building. They're fieldstone, and there's gonna have, they're gonna, they're gonna have uplighting here and here, so from the train, when you go by, or from anywhere in the back of the building, at nighttime, these pillars here will be illuminated. There also is goose neck lighting here, which will illuminate down. We're changing these all to French windows now, and during the warm months, upstairs in the dining room, these doors will actually open up inward on top of each other, and it'll basically be like you're sitting outside.
And is that sign gonna be illuminated?
I'm sorry?
Is the sign going to be illuminated on that elevation?
Uh, yes. Actually, this will be illuminated from behind. The only thing that will really, it's a, it's a backlit sign, so the only thing that will really illuminate are, is Rickleton's and the light bulb up here and Village Tavern. So, that there's not gonna be a light in front of it, there'll be a light behind it.
When you say backlit, you mean individual letters that create the, basically the halo type effect?
Right.
Okay. It's not a, it's not a panel board with a backlit?
No, no.
Okay, so it's, so that, that is permitted, just?
All right. Thank you. Boyd, any other questions for this witness?
Well, I just have one other comment. On, on the back of it, on the parking lot, the way you have that striping, is this what you're trying, you're hoping somebody will re-stripe, 'cause it's not striped that way now?
No, actually, we've talked to the parking authority, and right now, this door is over here, and we're changing the door over here, and we've had conversations with the parking authority, and they're all on board, and they're happy to do it. This is already existing.
Okay. Boyd, good? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Do you want to ask the public if there's any comment?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Good idea. At the, this time, is there any questions or comments from the public?
Well, not comments, but questions, cross-examination of the witness.
Questions, thank you.
Good evening, everyone's welcome. My question, young executive, what about Seton Hall University? Is this, is this pub gonna be catered to them?
Um, good question. We are gonna welcome Seton Hall students. We've had a lot of talk with people from Seton Hall, board members, the president. We don't, we don't wanna be a college pub, that's not our intention at all. We will welcome them with open arms. It will be very closely monitored as far as who comes in, especially the college pub, I mean, the Irish pub. But to answer your question, we will welcome them, but at the same time, excuse me, we don't plan on being a college pub.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, counsel?
Thank you. With that, I call Mike Lanze Fama, please.
Okay. I'm gonna take that, that one can come. I would leave the other one up, counsel, 'cause we can see the image of, of the awning, or the sign, whatever it is.
Oh, okay, so just put that there.
No, the other way.
Other way.
Yeah. Leave that one visible. That's good. I mean, you can, yeah.
In fact, Mr. Chairman?
In fact, Mr. Chairman, because there's some color augmentation to the site plan, which was previously submitted, I'm gonna mark that as A3.
Okay. We have to, yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Lanze Fama, you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
The name is Michael Lanze Fama, that's L-A-N-Z-A-F-A-M-A. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor and planner, licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal with the firm of Casey and Keller Incorporated, 258 Main Street, Milburn, New Jersey.
And if you can provide, Mr. Lanze Fama, with, to the board with your areas of expertise, licenses and experience in the field?
Certainly. I've been licensed as a professional engineer and land surveyor since 1984, and as a professional planner since 1985. I hold a bachelor of science degree in civil and environmental engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've testified before numerous boards throughout the state as a, in all three categories. I've testified before this board some time ago, haven't been here recently. I was the engineer and planner for the Muse project on Third Street, we did that some time ago, as well as some of the redevelopment projects along Church Street.
And you qualified as an expert witness in the area of engineering and planning on those occasions?
Yes, sir, I did.
We asked him, Mr. Lanze Fama, if you qualify as a expert in the areas of engineering and planning.
Yes, thank you.
And, Mr. Lanze Fama, you're familiar with the plans for this application in the surrounding area?
Yes, I am. As you can see from what we've marked as Exhibit A3, this is just a slightly colorized version of our site plan drawing, which was submitted to you for your review and approval, and you can see from the plan, the building is centrally located on the lot and pretty much occupies most of the property. The property is just over 6,000 square feet, about 6,600 square feet in size, and is located in the B1 zone. It's identified as tax lot 12 in block 1908. As Mr. Johnson had pointed out, the proposal here is to basically reutilize the existing structure for a restaurant, just as it has been over numerous years. What we're proposing to do primarily is to create a walkway area elevating the pedestrian access coming from Valley Street so that a person can walk, either a handicapped person or anyone from Valley Street directly, and enter the restaurant. To do that, what we're proposing to do is create a decking that's being constructed over the existing plaza area. We're taking the central risers and elevating the patio so that it, it can elevate itself up to the main floor level of the building, which is at approximately elevation 101.2. And in addition to that, to create some protection from the environment, we're creating a canopy. As you can see in Exhibit A2, you can see the entrance, it says entrance, and Rickleton's, and you can see the pedestrian walking into the entrance. And the primary variance that we're seeking is an encroachment into the side yard setback. Under your ordinance, in the B1 zone, you can have a zero setback, or if there's a doorway or window, you must have a minimum of ten feet. Since we're introducing a door at this location, as well as some windows along that facade, we're required to have a ten-foot separation. The building itself will be ten feet from the, from the side yard setback. However, the canopy will be encroaching into that area approximately nine feet, and the decking will go right up to the property line. And as I said, what this will do for us is provide for easier access into the facility. So, under the C2 criteria of the municipal land use law, we see a real benefit associated with this. We see the ability of bringing pedestrians directly from Valley Street safely into the facility, providing some protection from the outdoor environments, there'll be a st- the outdoor environments. There'll be a staircase here, which will fall under the canopy, so that will provide for protection of that staircase during wet weather conditions. Provides for cover for patrons waiting to enter the facility. And as you can see from A2 and A1 that you saw previously, the enhanced aesthetics of the, changes to the building will certainly improve the area overall. The idea of preserving and improving existing facilities in the Valley Street corridor, I think is an important one, and is spoken to in your master plan. There is a desire to create and reuse these facilities and improve the streetscape with the improved architectural elements proposed on this building. The additional variances that we are seeking, although we do not necessarily believe that we need a variance on the parking, we believe that it's an existing condition that long existed at the property, and that will continue to function as it has over numerous years. The way we calculated the parking required was a little different than Ms. Gruehl's. What we looked at under the ordinance is that it's one car for every 50 square feet of area of the building dedicated to patrons. So what we did is we looked at that area, and we found that it was a much smaller area than had indicated over the 7,600 square feet. The area designated to patrons on the main level was about 2,683 square feet, and on the lower level or the pub level was about 728 square feet, giving us a total area dedicated to patron use of about 3,411 square feet. So that would equate to, I believe, about 68 cars under the ordinance.
And further under the ordinance, the ordinance, as Ms. Gruehl pointed out, contemplates that this board can grant, even without a variance relief?
That's correct. The ordinance does indicate that, based upon the fact that there's available public parking, the board can waive, to any extent, the required number of parking spaces. There's also a stipulation in the ordinance that if you take the total square footage of the building divided by 800 square feet, whatever that number is, you must meet that. That only comes out to 12, so it's the one car for every 50 square feet for the area designated for patron use, that's the controlling factor here. Based upon our investigation of the area, we've put together a little packet for you, and one of the handouts that we have in the packet...
Why don't we first hand, we'll mark that as A4, and we'll hand that out. So, Mr. Lanzafama, as the board is handing out A4, marked for identification, if you can just go through the various pages that comprise A4 and identify what each page represents?
What has been handed out as A4 is basically a composite of the color renderings that you, that have been previously marked as A1 and A2, as well as existing site photographs. So the first sheet you see is the sheet that's been marked as A1, which is the color rendering of the building facade. The next page is the existing front elevation. So they give you a sense of improvement that's being proposed as part of the redevelopment here. The third page is what has been marked as Exhibit A2, which is the colorized elevation of the rear portion of the building. And then what is, would be Page 4, is an existing photograph of the rear portion of the building, and as you can see, there's some, the street light is available here, and the door that you see on the left is being relocated further to the right. The next page is a photograph of the walkway looking from the parking lot towards Valley Street. And you can see those three risers that you see in the photograph, that's where the decking is going to begin. And basically, we're elevating the lower level of this patio up to that upper level, and that will allow for direct access into the floor of the proposed restaurant facility. The next photograph, it shows you where, clearly where the bus stop is, and you can see, this is looking from Valley Street back towards the parking lot, and you can see the elevated patio there. The next photograph is just an angled view of the rear portion of the building, showing you some of the existing facade areas. The next several pages is what I was starting to speak to, which shows you an inventory of the existing parking lots in the area of the site. In the central portion of the photo, of the image, which was taken from Google Earth, there's a little X which indicates the location of Rickleton's. Immediately behind that is Lot Number 9, and to the south of that is Lot Number 3, between Second and First, which I believe is the, referred to as the Firehouse Lot. In both of those lots, there are at least 85 parking spaces readily available for potential patrons to the area. Further to the south at Valley and Third is an additional parking lot, which we had indicated we would instruct our employees to park in, but as we've been made aware, it's gonna be shut down for some time, so we'll, we'll have to make other accommodations for our employees. So in my opinion, I feel that, based upon the prior use within the building, the fact that there's never been an issue with parking before, that the, is an extensive amount of parking available in both on the street as well as the lots. As you know, along Valley Street, as you move to the north, there's quite a few angled parking spaces that are available to the public to utilize, as well as the two parking lots that are in, easily within walking distance to this facility. So you have a bank of about 170-plus cars that are available for a potential maximum use of about 68 cars within the facility.
And the 68 cars within the facility does not necessarily take into consideration people walking to the facility?
That is correct.
Whether it's from the train station, whether it's from the Seton Hall area?
That is correct.
Via the jitney, or people who are already parked from the train who are going to have dinner?
That is correct. That is correct.
I just wanna go through a number of other comments that Ms. Gruehl appropriately raised. One waiver request has to do with the no loading zone that's proposed. If you can just go over that, Mr. Lanzafama?
Certainly. As it's been described to me by the owner, there's an entrance door at the southwest corner of the building. This is gonna be the door in which deliveries are brought into the facility. It's also where trash is brought out of the building. Delivery vehicles often park on the northern edge of this parking area, and they make deliveries to the various stores fronting on South Arden J Avenue. They will be instructed to do the same thing, park in that upper area and dolly the deliveries up into the facility. As far as trash goes, there is a location within the building where trash is going to be stored. It is also gonna be brought out of this doorway every evening, put at the curb, and the, the private hauling firm will be picking it up at 6:00 a.m. every morning. The employees, when they come back at about 7:00 a.m., will bring in the tote. So it'll be probably two such containers on wheels that they'll be able to wheel in and out of the facility, so that would be handled on a daily basis. Two of the other questions that were raised in the memorandum were, one of lighting and one of landscaping. What we had indicated on the plan were lighting levels that currently exist. If you refer to photograph number five...
You're referring to A4.
In A4, photograph number five in A4. If you look, there's a series of soffit lights that exist along the building. Those will be retained. And the soffit lighting, we had all the lights turned on when we took these lighting levels. So these are the lighting levels resulting from the soffit lighting. So as, as you can see, there's adequate lighting in and along that corridor. Now, there will be some sconces proposed. These are decorative in nature. We don't anticipate them generating a large amount of light, but they would only augment that lighting and make it so that it was not intrusive, but would provide an appropriate lighting for the staircases, as well as the walkway, as you move down from the entrance towards Valley Street.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt.
There is some on Torre Loco.
Sarah, I'm sorry to interrupt, and I won't let my board do this, but the, none of the renderings show that soffit to remain.
I know. It, for some reason, it doesn't, but the architect has indicated to me that the soffit is to be retained on the building.
So we're gonna need new rendering, I mean, or you need to send us an architectural drawing to show that?
On the architect's plans, we'll have to be clear that the soffit lighting will be retained.
So that will be in lieu of the sconces that are shown?
No, no, they wanna keep the sconces, but they're gonna have the soffit lighting is gonna be the primary source of lighting. The sconces are gonna be more low-level lighting, just to give a little accent to the building. That's what the architect has informed me.
Can you just tell me the direction of that, what side of the building that is?
That is the south side of the building.
Thank you.
As to the landscaping, again, there are several trees that are located in the vicinity of the canopy that will have to be removed. There's one deciduous-type tree that's kind of on an angle and would pose some difficulty for us in the construction of the canopy and the deck. That would be removed. And there's some smaller evergreens that would come out. The existing landscaping would be retained. Some of the trees would obviously be pruned back, and all of the planters would be supplemented with annuals and different types of plantings that would be put in through the year to try and give it some green space and some color at various points in the year. We haven't done a formal landscaping plan other than to say that we propose to supplement and maintain the existing vegetation where possible. If the board thinks it's prudent, we can have a landscape architect develop a landscape plan that can be submitted to either Sal or Susan for their review and approval. I believe that covered...
Well, right, and just to clarify, even though Mr. Johnson talked about it, one of the comments in Ms. Gruehl's memo had to do with the blade sign that originally was located...
Right next to the left window. Yes, it was located up through here. That has been amended to bring it down between the first and second floor, as permitted under the ordinance. And the area of that sign is gonna be less than nine square feet.
So, Mr. Lanzafama, you started talking about the various positive and negative criteria that's incident to the, certainly the variances that are requested by the applicant as part of this application. If you would just go through that, I guess, under the flexible C2 criteria?
Correct. We talked about the benefit. Here is the recapturing of an existing facility, the renovation, the aesthetic improvements of the building, the creation of a safe pedestrian access from Valley Street to the front entrance by elevating the patio area. You're making it handicap accessible from Valley Street and mass transportation. I think those are certainly benefits that outweigh any negatives associated with the granting of the variance. This is open on all sides, the canopy, so it's, it's not as though you're placing a building directly against an adjacent building. It's more of an open area and a plaza. The entry door is more than 10 feet from the side setback, so I think we've met the intent of the ordinance, which was to make sure that entry doors and windows were at least 10 feet from a side property line. I think there's gonna be adequate light and air circulation around that area, so I believe that the variance could be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good or the intent and purpose of your zone plan.
And in terms of the waivers that are required as part of this application, is it your professional opinion that due to the existing configuration of the building and the lack of space on the site, that there would be no practical way to comply with the ordinance specifically with regard to the loading?
Yeah, with regard to loading, as you can see, this is the way the building has functioned since its inception. The ability to have delivery vehicles parked within an adjacent off-street parking area, a municipal lot, and still have them come in and make their deliveries, I think is sufficient to grant that waiver.
So whether it's the, the C1 criteria?
Or the C2 criteria, I think, is appropriate in this application.
Okay, so you feel that either is appropriate for the granting of this application?
Yeah, you're looking at a lot that is basically totally encompassed by its building. There's very little room to do anything other than create entry areas. There's really no room to provide parking or loading on the site itself.
And finally, I believe, one of the, the board members asked a question about, about lead compliance and all. If you just wanna...
I have no idea.
Okay. Fair enough. I have no further questions for this witness at this point, yes?
Did you perform a traffic study? And the reason I ask that is, is, look, first of all, I'm all in favor of the business, so let me not start by that. But, you know, you point to all of these lots, that there's capacity, an excess capacity. Well, Sayud Plaza, Sterling Development, Eden Gourmet...
Judges?
Giorgio's, everybody is using these same lots. I agree with our esteemed president that we do have to somehow solve parking, but everybody can't use all of the same lots or we run out of parking. And I would feel very comfortable, and I really don't wanna slow this thing down, but I'd be very comfortable seeing literally a parking study done, you know, at least for the board's sake. I mean, we have, I mean, Biffes Motors, we have, the Biffes site, which is now 50-odd units and 9,000 square feet of retail, we've put them through the same thing. They had to justify, where is the parking gonna come from? Sayud Plaza is gonna use some of the same spaces in the lots that you're talking about. So I would feel fairly comfortable if we had a parking study, and I don't see that here. I've heard what you've said, but I just don't see it here.
With all due respect, the, what we have to focus on is the fact that this type of facility existed here for many, many years, and what we need to focus on is the fact that we're actually reducing the number of seats that are available within the facility. We've dropped it by about 17 or 18 seats. So we're, we're not overdeveloping the site, in my opinion. If, if we weren't here for the changing of the entry door and adding a canopy and a plaza, we could just come in, get renovation permits, and open tomorrow.
I think, I think what, I hear you.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
I think what we, Mr. Miller was simply responding to is that the argument that there's available public parking is kind of falling on deaf ears on the board, just so you know, because we've granted that to many other applicants, and those spaces are well taken up. And we also know that that space is very busy at night, and it's, you know, for computers.
But you have to realize...
I definitely hear the fact that if not for this canopy, you would be open today, and there would be nothing. So we definitely understand that. So, just so you know, the argument tells it...
Having heard what you had to say, just the fact that this is not necessarily the destination. The destination, we hope, are other retail uses, Southpac. This, this is the destination, and that they will park to utilize this facility and frequent our place. So it's multiple trips, you know, for, for one parking area.
We're on the same page, we're just...
The other question, 'cause I couldn't see your tracing, how you're, you're handling the disposal. You're saying they're gonna carry the cans up and down the steps?
Yeah, yeah, that's what they're gonna have to do. They're on wheels. They can roll them down. It's the only way we can handle it.
Anybody else?
There was no way to get it into the basement level.
Neil?
Just, in your opinion about the one parking space per 50 square feet, is that a reasonable consideration for this type of suburban, urban space? Or do you feel like, I mean, I don't even know when that was established. That seems a little high. So I just wanna know what your, since you're an expert.
Well, many other municipalities base it upon the number of seats. I've seen a few municipalities use the similar... I've seen a few municipalities use the similar framework that you're utilizing, although I've seen actually numbers as low as 40, one car for 40 square feet. I don't think it's totally unreasonable, but in this particular case, I believe that the fact that this has a track record, this site has a track record, with the amount of parking that's readily available, not only within municipal lots, but on the street, and the fact that many patrons will come via mass transportation or walking as a second idea. In other words, their primary destination might be a retail, or Southpac, or whatever, and they come to the restaurant as, just as a stopping point, a resting point. So, they'll be utilizing the parking spaces truly in a very economical way. There'll be parking, shopping, and eating here, hopefully.
Saying we have to keep our stars open to 1/3?
That really answers your question. You really have to look at it. Look at places like Hoboken, Bayonne, where you have many, many restaurants and with very little parking availability, and people figure it out. They use mass transportation or park on the street.
You're saying that the parking that we have is sufficient based on the model that you've created with the way that people are, and Mr. Johnson's saying the employees won't be parking near the restaurant, that three months after it opens, that parking's a problem. No one from the restaurant is going to complain to their town.
I couldn't say that, too.
Well, you see, this is the problem that I have with the statements that you're making. The past two iterations, both of them had problems with the parking, and which is why the question that Mr. Miller asked becomes very important, did you cut a deal with one of the private parking lots? There's just the PNC Bank Building, which has plenty of spaces open in the evening, and there are two other private lots there. And there's just a concern on our part that the place will have a problem with the parking, and I, you know, and I fully think that we might pass this anyway. I'm more concerned about the long-term future of the restaurant, and the parking has to be addressed. And you didn't do a parking study for us, and it shows it. And right now, the client's place is out of business, which has freed up a lot of spaces in that lot, but that could one day, again, become a catering place, and then there's a whole big problem all over again, which is why I would implore the owners of that business to seek out private rental for parking now and not wait until it becomes too late. And people say, well, I'm not going there, there's no parking, because that's the problem that you face. And in the ideal picture, people will come and park at So Pac, walk over, eat dinner, and come back and see the show, but that's more fantasy than reality for restaurants in suburbia. People go out to eat, and people may go out to a show, but they often don't do the same in the same night, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
So, I want to deal with the reality and not what you're hoping to happen.
Thank you, Mark. Sal?
If you look at Chapter 92-201, which is, basically outlines the required off-street parking, for restaurants, eating and drinking establishments, there is a little 1 listed after that. When you get to the end of the chapter, basically under the Note for 1, it says, "For existing buildings located in the B1 zone, the following parking requirements shall be satisfied." So, the following parking requirements shall be satisfied for properties listed in the B1 zone. This is in the B1 zone, and that's for restaurants. If you look, it says, "For a total building-floor area, under 5,000 square feet, occupancy not more than 49 persons, there's no parking required." For a building of 5,000 to 10,000 square feet, it's 1 for each 800 square feet of gross floor area. So, the ordinance allows for relief for businesses and properties in the B1 zone. So, the building is approximately?
9,000 and change. So, it would equate to about 12 spaces.
So, you're looking at about, a requirement of about 12 spaces by the ordinance. That's what would be required. In calculating it for the restaurant, that's when you get up to the 68 spaces, but the intent of the ordinance, I'm assuming, is that in the downtown in the B1 district, there is public parking, there's on-street parking, so there is the opportunity for more shared parking in that area, as opposed to in residential zones or B2 zones. When you step out from the B1, you're out of the central business district, now you're into a B2 zone. It's, you know, there's a lot more of a mix there. So, I think, based on that, the applicants really only needs 12 parking spaces. I don't disagree with, you know, what Trustee Rosner said about perhaps approaching some of the neighboring businesses, the banks that are basically closed at night, that have free parking, you know, open parking lots. That would be a good location for their employees to park, and that would be in their best interest to not have their employees parking right next to the bar, when, you know, they want their patrons to park right next to the bar, and then hopefully walk home.
Thank you for that clarification, it's very helpful. Any other questions, Board? Any of the variances that you want to address? Are we, is signage something we're looking at to actually approve tonight, or?
The applicant's not requesting any variances, that was the one question I had regarding the projecting signage.
I'm sorry.
So, they haven't requested any variances for signage.
Okay.
I think as long as the applicant agrees that the signage will meet the requirements and comply with the ordinance, I don't...
At this point, the intent is to be fully compliant with regard to the signage requirements.
Okay. Any other comments, Sal, on the other variance request? Board, any other questions for this witness? All right, thank you very much. Oh, we do have, I'm sorry, Susan, I didn't see your hand go.
That's okay. I just had one question, I think, the idea of not having the Valley Street entrance open only for emergency. I'm, you know, is there, is, what's the purpose of that? I guess it would be nice to have walk-in there as well, potentially.
Come on, Mr. Chairman, come on.
I just had that.
Oh, carefully.
You have a door there, right?
Yeah. This part of the building, the front part facing Valley Street, is going to be strictly for private parties. We can handle parties of about 40 people in there. So, when there's not a private party in there, that door will be closed, the big old antique oak door that closes off that part of the building. When we do have a private party in there, we may use, we might utilize this door, but it's not a requirement from the fire department. I've had the chief, and he was in, yesterday, or Friday. But it will be a door that is functional, if we opt to use it, but on a regular basis, everything will come through the alley there.
And I gather that's for security purposes, or?
Yeah, exactly. Now, there's a small banquet room here and a small bar here, and we just don't want to have people have access to that during, while that room is closed.
Yeah, that's not really an interest of the restaurant per se, because the restaurant's behind. Are you concerned about any confusion? I guess there's also, I guess people get used to that door being, not opening.
Other than my waitstaff, no. We...
Because you come to Valley Street, and the first thing you're going to see is that sign.
Well, when you come in through the alleyway here, when you walk through the door, the bar will be on your left, and the restaurant will be on the right.
No, I definitely understand the purpose of the on, I'm just wondering for the presence on Valley Street, if people come?
I understand. There's going to be a brass plaque on here, saying for banquet entrance only, and yeah.
Go that way.
Fingers pointing that way.
Yeah, habit will tell us eventually. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. So, is there anybody in the public that have questions for this witness? Yes.
Yes, can you please describe what the nightlife will be like?
That may not be the exact question for the engineer, perhaps. Would you like to have the owner, the?
Yes, please.
Okay.
We won't charge you for the Stairmaster exercise.
You need the workout. So, in the main bar, there's a small area that will have, on Friday and Saturday nights, one or two guys playing acoustic guitar. There is a state-of-the-art sound system that'll be playing background music in the main restaurant. And then, there's also, around the main bar, there's two TVs facing each side of the bar, so there's eight TVs in there. And down in the Irish pub, there won't be any live music, but there will be two old antique Irish dartboards, and three TVs, and another state-of-the-art sound system down there that'll play more upbeat music. No dance floors or anything like that, though.
No karaoke?
I'm leaving that open.
All right, thank you.
Only if you agree to perform.
All right, so at this point, we have no questions anymore, and so, thank you very much, your witnesses.
So, as stated at the beginning, and we thank you very much for your time in listening to our application, we are seeking site plan approval, as well as the variances that were outlined by Mr. Lanzafama. We're very excited about this project, and we ask that you look favorably upon it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So, Board, if you have any thoughts or comments you want to air, or does someone want to make, propose a resolution?
Well, I'll propose a resolution, and I'll give it a try.
All right.
That the application be approved, subject to some of the comments that still need addressing, such as signage and visiting with, it's not Main Street anymore, I'll call it the Downtown Improvement District, just from a color standpoint and so forth.
Second?
Second, Sal, just quickly, we have anything on lighting that we have to deal with in terms of the resolution, no?
Just the change of plans. You wanted the plan changed?
I'd like, if we could get everything updated, if you have the soffit. I mean, personally, I love the idea of not having the soffit, but I love, if it were, lower lighting would be great. That walkway, I think, is a fantastic addition to the village, if we can get it, and that really has to be done very well, but that would be my opinion. But I think we need to, somehow, I don't want to necessarily go to the expense for new renderings, but somehow, you know, wrap up the drawing set for this resolution, so there's a consistency in our duplications.
And that also includes changing the sign to show that it's now conforming in the plans.
Pardon me, Chairman?
Michael.
Are you concerned that there is, with the soffit lighting, as proposed but not reflected, that there's too much light or not enough light?
We don't know.
I think, without seeing it in more detail, my instincts tell me that it's the kind of light that's not as, not as interesting, that if it was a lower light for the walkway itself, that you'd satisfy some of the lighting concerns, and then the sconces are decorative. It just seems a little bit less sophisticated, really, and, you know, you're doing so much for this building, it seems that that would, that's a missed opportunity, from my opinion, but that's not really part of this variance. That's what I was thinking.
I'd agree with that from an aesthetic, from a safety standpoint, not only from walking in perhaps slippery condition, a dark condition at night, people will be walking there quite a bit. I think lighting, the safety aspect is probably paramount there.
Right, no, absolutely, I think the lighting levels have to be adequate, but I think lower lighting levels at the ground plane is a better solution than up on the wall and then using the other lights, but...
I would agree with that.
Plus, it's your handicap access.
Handicap access, but it's a great addition to that walkway. Anyway, Michael, you had said, so, Susan?
I just, just to follow up on that, you know, based upon our comments, too, I would agree with what has been said. I would suggest that there be some isolux, you know, pattern, so we know, we know what the intensity will be, even on those low-level, which I happen to agree with the chairman on that, that that may be a better solution.
Do you require that to be submitted? What, how do we deal with the isolux? I mean, it's...
Well, a half a foot candle.
Have the foot candles submitted as part of the final?
But, you know.
And you would review that, Sal?
Yeah, an isolux, basically take the site plan, put the lights on there, give the isolux pattern, and with a minimum, you know, a minimum of a half a foot candle.
And who would be reviewing that? You would?
I'm sorry?
Who would review that?
Yeah, we can, we would review that, if that's the condition.
Okay, so the professional review of the photometrics of the lighting, okay.
I'd accept that amendment.
Counsel, you okay with that?
Yeah, just, again, to follow up on the one comment, going forward, we just can't keep approving parking spaces that we don't have. I mean, everybody that's come in has used all of the same lots, and just following up in President/Mayor's comments before, we've got to find a solution for that, because we just can't, just keep approving...
Well, we want our businesses to be successful, we don't want patrons not coming because again...
Well, but without parking, it may not be successful. I've seen many restaurants fail because there's no parking. Many retail establishments fail.
Just one thing the board should consider, though, this is an existing building and an existing site.
Right.
That has zero parking spaces, as opposed to the new developments that have come in, in which the applicants have requested parking variances, based on various transit models, you know, proximity to the train station, proximity to the downtown. So, I understand what you're saying, you have to look at each application on its own.
Yeah.
And in this case, this was a restaurant, it was a restaurant for years, and it relied primarily on the public parking.
Yeah, all I'm saying, Sal, is if you looked at all of the applications we approved, and you put all of those traffic studies together, and saw how many spaces of, from each lot, every one of these places have used, you would be down to a negative, probably.
And I think it's safe to say that you have a commitment from, you know, from myself and from the trustees, that that's part of what we're looking at when we're looking at redevelopment, and there are a couple, you know, ideas of redevelopment that we can't really discuss publicly yet, but adding parking to the downtown for people to be able to go to businesses is a major part of all of the ideas. So, that's definitely something that's aware of, and you're right, and we definitely need to do more there, and I think we will in the next couple of years.
And just a further note, a lot of times, parking issues, part of the parking issue is the employee parking.
Yeah.
Because many times, the employees are the ones that take up the quote "prime" space, and so, the idea of having employee parking a bit more remote is really very helpful in terms of dealing with parking.
Just the enforcement of that is very difficult. It's up to the owners to enforce that, it's very tough to enforce.
Counsel?
Just to go back for clarification, just in terms of the isolux patterns, just to show the intensity of what's being proposed by the application, correct?
Go ahead, as part of this application will be reviewed by the professional engineer that show the photometrics of the lighting. It just, it's not a huge effort, and it just sort of gives everybody a good feeling.
With that, I call a question.
Call a question?
Yeah, we have to vote on it.
I need a second.
Oh, do you want? We need a second.
I second.
Is everybody clear on what we're asking? Okay.
I've got four conditions.
You want to just read them out for us?
Yeah, I've got, the plans will be changed to reflect the signage is now conforming. Number two, it will be changed to reflect the soffits are staying. Number three, the plans will be reviewed with, is it your SID, or your, the planning group, is it the SID?
What are they called, what's Matthew Glass's group called?
Matthew Glass's group.
Oh, the Village Center Alliance?
Yes, yes. I would really recommend, please.
Village Center Alliance. And four, the applicant will provide some photometrics, which will be reviewed for compliance by the township engineer.
Good.
And I have a second by Reverend Wilson.
All right, real call.
Okay, Mr. Larno?
Yes.
Mr. Rosner?
Yes.
Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
Mr. Mello?
Yes.
Mrs. Torpe?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And Mr. Larno?
Yes, good, thank you, Board.
Thank you very much, we look forward to opening very shortly.
Good luck. Good luck. All right. All right, thank you. So, the last bit of business for this evening is, we have two ordinances in front of us. I don't know how much you had a chance to review them. Mark, do you want to talk a little bit about, my hunch is that the board hasn't really looked at them much, and we were going to, I think, the reason they're on the agenda is for us to, if we had any comments to pass back to you, I think, is that why they're there? And BOT ordinances, and, so, what I would recommend is that we push that forward, if the board can have just a chance to look at it, we have copies that were given to us. We'll push it to April, and if there are any comments, is that, since it's non-binding, it's just for us to pass our feedback, and that gives you guys a chance to look at them if there's anything you want, and we'll deal with that later.
Mark, you know, when these were scheduled on our next board meeting? Do you remember?
Second meeting, Mark, so if you don't get it now, you don't hear it.
Well, I'm going to say that, of course. We have to wait 45 days from the first meeting, so we tend to be going on it in April, if we don't discuss this tonight. So, we're going to have a replacement.
Oh, so the...
Tom, I do have, I have some questions, but mine is more...
I actually think that, you know, we could probably have Susan Gruel give an overview, since she wrote this tonight, and I, furthermore, I think that the planning board actually once did discuss this previously a few years ago and came back with an okay, so I don't know that there's anything substantially different.
Yeah, and I don't want to hold it up either, so...
I can give some of the language comments that I have to Susan direct. I'd rather hold it up.
Yeah, if there are more substantial comments that end up coming out, if people send you... if people send you guys comments and say, "Okay, this is big enough that we all do need to get back together," maybe we can obtain that.
Yeah, mine is more language.
Mostly language-based, which is probably what they're going to end up being. That's something that can be direct.
Yeah, I mean, I can do a brief highlight summary of what is in here, if you would like.
How brief is it?
Brief.
Good.
Very brief.
Yes, well, you do that well.
Some of it is an update as to what's happened since the original redevelopment plan was adopted. It reflects existing conditions. It talks about Third and Valley. There are certain statutory requirements that need to be updated that have happened since then. They have, the objectives or revised objectives encourage green sustainable standards and reference streetscape improvements. What has occurred on Page Six, an office overlay has been added to the district's map and are referenced under principal permitted use. The overlay, office overlay, and I think, I believe that's what was referenced about discussion before, identifies sites and buildings that do not front on South Orange Avenue and may have offices on the first floor. That probably is the most substantive change of this, although it does change the maximum lot coverage from 85 to 90 percent. And it deletes the maximum residential density because you have the mix of residential and commercial. It correctly references the affordable housing section that's in the regular land development ordinance. The, there are definitions that are included. There are also design standards that, basically, but not totally, are more inclusive and follow a lot of what was in the Third and Valley redevelopment plan so that there's some consistency there. And there's the relationship to other plans, that's been updated. And some of the maps have been updated. That's basically, was that quick enough?
Yeah, and we should reiterate that we've worked on this here before in the Board.
Yes, and that's what, so those were the, those were, again, some of these go through the document, but those were the highlights.
Okay.
Did I, did I miss anything from...
I think you did good, did well. Okay, so, I mean, I don't think, again, you guys may have to catch up if there's a catch-up on your reading and...
I had a question regarding Section Two. All ordinances, part of ordinances, more specifically ordinance 13-20 are repealed. What is 13-20?
I think that was the old amendment.
Yeah, I mean, most likely, those repealers are on all of our ordinances. I don't want to say that's 100% what it is.
I'm sorry, where is it?
But that just ensures, because usually those repealers just ensure consistency in the ordinances, so if there's anything that was on a related subject, this just replaces all of that, so that there's not any discrepancy. Is that, do you guys...
That makes sense. I don't know exactly, but that probably is what it means. But do you? Was there an amendment last year?
It was a couple of years ago.
13-20?
Oh, 13-20, that was the... Yeah, I don't know, but it was minor.
The only, I did want to say one thing about the green sustainable standards. I felt like it was very vague. I don't feel like there's any structure around the statement that they shall be incorporated into the development to the extent feasible. And I felt like, I feel like as a, South Orange should have more substantial green guidelines for new development, quite honestly. We're going to be missing the boat. We're going to fall behind other towns in terms of sustainability. And honestly, I mean, there's LED is incorporated to some of the streetscape. I mean, every other area in this document that I read has more substantiality than this. And to say, to the extent feasible, doesn't really have a real level of...
Commitment.
Enforcement or anything. There's no way for us to determine that except by opinion of whoever we're listening to. So I feel like if any of the area of this needs to be developed, that definitely should be one.
Okay. In the Third and Valley, just as a comment, in the Third and Valley redevelopment plan, I believe that we had up to silver standard. And then they had to come in, when they came in for site plan approval, they had to come in and show how they, well, first of all, that they would attain that. And second of all, there was a bit of discussion about the manner in which they were going to do that. And they had the details. Now, you know, that's a good point. I, you could always put that in.
I think when we had the original discussion, first of all, the Board's, you know, with a new project, we'd been more requiring that the other Energy Star or LEED certified. The question also came up, though, when it came to a cost of a project, the amount of money they'd added to the project. And some Board members felt that they didn't want to put an onerous thing, especially when it comes to redeveloping an old building, where you could run into real cost issues on being energy efficient, so to speak. But it's probably something we could probably clean up in the future. If the, we actually, I think we formally asked the Environmental Commission to come back to us with something that would be, that would be more, awarding might be more suitable, and we could just amend the plan again to add that.
Yeah, just as a point, I'm on the Environmental Commission, and I'm going to liaison between these two. So I can bring that up at the next meeting as well. I think that, I mean, just as, from a professional perspective, it's like, LEED shouldn't cost more, green stuff shouldn't cost more. It does, I mean, you know, I've done many LEED buildings. So I've heard the argument about it costing more for years, and we've always shown it doesn't have to. So I just, you know, I just, I'm honestly a little surprised that the Jonathan Rose project is only LEED silver when their Verde project in the Bronx is platinum. And they've been seen as a leader in green stuff over the years. So I'm, you know, I just, I'm new, I don't want to, like, make too many waves, but I just feel like that's one area that needs to really be tightened up.
Make waves.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so we've reviewed those, I think, appropriately.
So just one last thing. For our next meeting, we have committees that we have to form. And Jettie, if you can send out a note to our lovely new chair, he doesn't know it yet, but he will, that, you know, there are committees that have to be reassigned and give them a list of the committees, that would be helpful. And send it to all the Board members, so maybe the Board members could look at it and see which committee they want to be on.
Perfect, exactly. And maybe just a tiny description of what they might do, those subcommittees, if we know. All right, that'd be excellent. All right, thank you, everybody. I think that's all we have, so we are adjourned.
Thank you, you were in a great meeting. You're really going to be missed.
All right, thank you.